We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Dr. Salazar, excuse me.
I can lead it, sir. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
Sir Castillo, can you help us with all comments?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jesus Amaya. Mr. William Garza.
Present.
Mr. Sandra Garcia is not here. Hi, Mr. Martin Castillo is here. Ms. Dawnie Pearson.
Present.
Mr. Ray Farias.
Present.
Mr. Ruben Trevino is not here. Dr. Gonzalo Salazar.
Present.
Ms. Celena Delagata.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Salazar, can we start the public hearing on the optional flexible school day program?
Yes, Mr. Amaya, members of the Board, the optional flexible school day program is a program that we use at our College Career and Technology Academy, our dropout recovery center. And here to explain a little bit more about the optional flexible school day program is Mrs. Amado Siwaha, Executive Director for Support Services. Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you. Mr. Amaya, members of the Board, Dr. Salazar. This afternoon is part of the Texas Education Code. We are required to hold a public hearing in order for us to apply for optional flexible school day program. And if you, every year, there's one of our agenda items asking for your approval to apply for what we refer to OFSDP, optional flexible school day program. And this program is, it's taking place, which run at our College Career Technology Academy, referred to as our CCTA lab or CCTA campus academy. This is run by Mrs. Gaga, right here, right next door. And to be eligible to run the program in the Texas Education Code states, that the student must be at risk of dropping out of school. That the student must have problems with attendance requirements and trying to gain some of the credits. Due to their absences, they're not receiving the credit that they need. So this is an opportunity for them to be involved or eligible and enrolled in the program. This also, the students who are attending, this is also available in some districts, those districts who have an early college, high school program, or they're implementing an approved innovative campus plan. Or, in our case, the student is attending a community-based dropout recovery education program as defined by the Texas Education Code. Now, there's two instances. There's an E1 where we have a campus, we have teachers, and that's what E1 refers to, have campus and one teacher for every 28 students. Or, the E2 in the Texas Education Code is saying that we are running a program that has an online program. In our case, in our district, we have an online program. Before, we used to have Compass, but now Compass is out and now we have Edgenuity. It's a new program. And if the student is 18 years of age and not emancipated by marriage or court order, then the student's parent must agree in writing that the student will participate in this program. So we need both of these requirements. And I'm going to go back to the first one about the online program. We're moving from Compass Learning to a new platform called Edgenuity. I know that's one of the agenda items as well, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Laundrie to please give us a little bit of feedback on the platform Edgenuity.
Good evening. Edgenuity is a credit recovery program that will be replacing our Compass Learning. We've had Compass for a number of years in our school district and use that as our credit retrieval program. And we've had a few concerns about the program over the years and it's begun to get outdated, particularly in the area of security, making sure that our courses are secure and that students are being able to complete those with the utmost integrity. Also, the courses were limited. We purchased Compass on a course-by-course basis. So, a year ago, Compass was acquired by Edgenuity and we were informed about three or four months ago that they would no longer be supporting the program because they had their own credit recovery program. And so, we began looking at that time for a new credit recovery program. And our strategists, as well as our content coordinators, they reviewed three different programs and Edgenuity came out on top. Because of its vastness, we are essentially leasing an entire library. And so, that gives us access to electives that we did not before have through Compass. So our students have more opportunities to pursue areas of interest as they're getting their credits instead of taking perhaps the electives that we have available under Compass. It also has a broader range of core curriculum available. And so, in addition to meeting those requirements, it also has a very robust test prep program. And so, that's for EOCs as well as PSAT, SAT, ACT, TSI. And so, we can see using this beyond even just the credit recovery piece. And so, while this will be credit recovery at our CCTA, it is also part of our tier program at LSU and at LFHS. So, for those reasons, we chose Edgenuity. You'll see in the backup document in the board book, it wasn't the cheapest program, but it was the most highly rated program for the reasons that I mentioned, as well as the security. They're really on top of the security piece of it, which made us feel more confident in going with that program.
Thank you, Ms. Laundrie. Looking forward to having that program at CCTA. Also, another eligibility criteria for our district is that we go out and any student who needs more than two credits and they're graduating, in order for them to graduate in the cohort, we do a focus, what do we call it, a cohort retrieval, the dropout recovery test, that's the word I was looking for. So in August, we look at the students who have not shown up to school and we go out and recover the students and try if they're missing between two and 12 credits or 14 credits. We bring them back into CCTA and offer them an opportunity to receive credits and be able to graduate with their cohort. Most of our students who are at CCTA are experiencing unusual extenuating circumstances. Some of them have our parents, they need to go work. So with optional flexible school day program, they are able to go in the morning. We have a very structured optional flexible. Some of the students go in there for half a day and then they go back into work, into the working force. Some of them might have mental health issues or they're runaway. So there's so many extenuating circumstances. And what we're trying to do is to recover some of the credits and offer them an opportunity to graduate. And not with their cohort, with the most, probably at the end of the year or in the summer graduation. There's a minutes required, there's at least 45 minutes required a day, but not to exceed 10 hours of instruction in one school day. As I said, most of our students are very flexible in going into at least half a day. And when we bring them in and when the parents sign them in if they're under 18, we ask that they participate the most number of hours and minutes so that they can receive some credits. This year, we have 159 students enrolled in CCTA. At the end of the year, we had 159. Now, in a day, we do not have 159 students present, but in average, about 40 to 45 students. And it's rotating. Some of them come three days, four days a week, depending on what their schedule provides them the opportunity to come in. But this year, up to this last graduation, we have graduated 41 students current, this current year, school year, and we're expected to graduate 10 more in August through summer graduation. So it will be a total of about 51. In average, a year, we've been doing about between 30 to 40 students a year. So as I said, it's part of our Texas Education Code that we do a public hearing and present this opportunity that we're providing for our students. I don't know, there's any questions?
Can you go back to the slide on the requirements, on the criteria that y'all use? Not only the ones that are cited in code are in code, right? The rest of them are local, is that correct?
Yes. Those are the ones that are on code. This, the next ones, these are the ones that we take more action and we try to go recover some more students coming in.
So we can be more strict, we just can't be as long, less, as long as we're following the code. The other thing, on the next slide, it may be on that one, on the 45 minutes a day, now that, it says 45 minutes a day every day, I think it said.
A minimum of 45 days.
A day. Now, their schedule may not be every day of the week, is that correct?
Correct.
So only on the days that they're supposed to show up?
If they show up, we want them at least to be there at least 45 minutes a day.
Okay, and this is the last question. Why does it have to be optional and flexible? Wouldn't one word do?
That's the way it's written, sir.
No, I know, but doesn't that, it makes, it's very difficult to say, optional.
Optional flexible.
Flexible. You would think one that would work. This is an open meeting. Is there questions from the audience? Public hearing, excuse me. Anyone up here? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ladies. Go on to District Presentation, sir.
Mr. Amaya, members of the Board, in a sort of related item, currently, students demonstrate mastery of learning objectives through the State of Texas, State of Texas Academic Readiness Test, or the STAR. Several years ago, when students were taking the Texas Assessment of Knowledge and Skills, the State of Texas put in place this Student Success Initiative, which meant that at certain grade level, at certain grade levels, students had to pass the state assessment and demonstrate mastery before they could be promoted. Since then, the State of Texas has looked at, has taken into consideration that some students may have met all of the requirements for graduation except for being able to pass one or more tests on the, one or more of the state assessments. As you know, students have to demonstrate mastery of learning objectives in the content areas. So, Texas, in order to help students meet the requirements, that Texas has put in place things like the IGC, the individual graduation, individual graduation plans that allow students to complete satisfactory, complete, satisfactorily complete a project or take a test in lieu of passing the state assessment. And here to tell us more about a local assessment criteria that would help, that would be of benefit to students who continue to come in to try to pass the Texas Assessment of Knowledge and Skills is Mr. McDonough, Executive Director for Academics. And I'm going to have to ask you for a round of applause for Mr. McDonough as well.
Thank you, President Amaya, members of the Board, Dr. Salazar. Just as Dr. Salazar explained, the legislature created an alternative pathway to graduation for kids that take the STAR and of course exams. What they realized in the past legislative session was they left out this type of an option for students that were, that entered grade nine before 2011, 2012 school year. So that basically, the students that took TACs. So they realized that there's this group of students that are out there that have possibly completed all of their graduation credits, but were not able to graduate because maybe they're missing one section of the TACs test. Whereas, the STAR students have been able to graduate through individual graduation committees. So, they enacted these, this next statute that we're going to present to give those students the opportunity to possibly graduate if they meet certain prerequisites. What they did in the statute under this bill was they created basically two pathways for these students that enter grade nine before 2011, 2012 to graduate. There is Texas Administrative Code 74.102.7C and D. One is the alternate pathway, the other is the alternate local pathway. The first one, which is the alternate pathway, there are prerequisites that they have to meet. What it is, is again, these students that are TAC students, so they entered grade nine prior to 2011, 2012, they completed all of their credits. So as far as credit, class-wise, they completed all of the minimum credits needed for graduation under their plan. They failed one or more sections of TACs and they've attempted that failed section of TACs at least three times. So we'd have to go back and verify, did they come or during their time while they're enrolled in high school, attempted at least three times. If they've met these prerequisites, they could be considered for the alternate pathway. So the next step would be to see if they then met one of these criteria that they have listed. One is, did they meet certain standards on SAT, SAT, TSI, basically college-level type scores? Number two, did they possibly meet satisfactory performance on the GED in the subject area? So possibly a student failed the math section of TACs, that was the only thing. Later on, they went, they challenged the GED and they passed the math section. They could bring that to us and we could use that in order to award a diploma. Provide evidence of an industry-recognized post-secondary certificate. This is the famous 74th certificates that TEA has now endorsed as career-ready certificates. Provide evidence of current active-duty service in the Armed Forces, or a DD Form 214, honorable or general discharge. If they were able to bring this, we could also use that. Or provide proof of completed college-level coursework. So if they could meet any of these, along with having met all of the high school credits, they could be considered for the alternate pathway to graduation. What they realized is probably the vast majority of these students, besides maybe the military or the GED option, they probably are not going to meet, for example, those performance standards that they've set on the SAT, ACT, TSI are very high. They're college-level, so if they could score that high on those exams, they would have taken care of all the sections of TACs. So they realized that they had to also have a second option for these students. That's where you go to the local alternative pathway. And this is what we are bringing tonight in Local Policy EIF and the resolution that we're bringing before the Board. Again, exact same prerequisites will be needed that we saw before. They've completed all their credits, they failed one or more sections of TACs, they've attempted that failed section at least three times. Then what they did was they gave a list and what they basically told local districts is you could consider one or more of these six criteria that are referenced, that are listed here. What we did was we took this to our College Readiness Task Force. We always bring everything to the task force, so it's not one person that's making the decision. And we reviewed each of them. And you can see some of them leaves a lot of latitude for districts. For example, the first one, review of grades in the subject area. So I guess you could just allow the committee to look at the grades they received. If they failed the math TACs, you could look back at their math grades, use that as consideration. Review of scores on the failed assessments. I guess you could look at to see how close they came. Performance on project or work samples in applicable areas. This was the one that our task force preferred because it's in line with the IGC. This is how we, this is the criteria that we use presently for our STAR kids. They have to come in, they have to complete a project that we've prepared through our content strategists. It has to be done onsite, has to be graded by our content strategists. We have control of it and we feel at that point we could justify that they've met that criteria. The last three, individual participation, reading in remediation, individuals' attendance, or other academic work or life experience. We felt that the others left a lot of gray area and we felt, the committee felt most confident in just staying with the performance projects, which we're very comfortable with that process. We already have the process in place. And then we could keep it the same basically as we have right now for our STAR kids. So they come in, we already have the project, we already have. And in the backup, I presented, I gave you all some of the documentation that we would use to track it, as far as that. So the recommendation that we're bringing tonight for the Board to consider is using that one criteria and tailoring our local EIF and the resolution to meet that criteria. Any questions?
There are two items on the agenda tonight in connection with this. There's a resolution which would capture Board action stating that we're, the Board is willing to award a diploma based on the criteria that has been recommended by the College Readiness Task Force and that Mr. McDonough articulated here tonight. And then there's a revision to our Board Policy EIF. So those two items are in consent agenda. And again, if anyone has any questions, we can expand on, try to answer those at this time.
Did you get any information on why we were doing it by resolution?
Yes. Again, Board resolutions capture Board action. Because we are making a decision to award a high school diploma, we need to capture and save for posterity why this policy was changed. So it's not just a policy revision, but the Board made a conscious decision that based on the information we presented here, we are allowing students to grad, students who were under TACs to get a high school diploma if they meet these requirements.
Well, we've never done it that way, have we?
Never done it that way.
I mean, we always make revisions to the policy and never done it this way. That's, to me, that was the question. Why as a resolution this time? But, I guess it makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough.
Thank you, sir.
The second District Presentation under this item on the agenda. For that, we invite Mr. Amado. There's one change to policy BBB under Policy Update 110.
Policy Update 110 only includes one local policy. During the fall, we received a survey from TASB, from the Policy Service, requiring us to complete a survey and then they worked on policy BBB. Policy, the local policy, this policy addresses Board Member elections as a law by law. There was not a lot of changes, most of it was cosmetic. And it also provided additional details regarding the number of Board Members, which has not changed, seven. The length of the terms, which is three years. They provided the election schedule. And what they did with that, they just provided more details than two years. They were very specific on 2018, then three years later, which positions came up for reelection on which year. So that was not included in the prior and they just updated BBB. Election date, November. And the methods of election and voting, just provided again, information on the candidates who received the more votes and that was the one who was elected as a Board Member. So as I said, not very many changes. It was more just providing additional detail to clear our policy. And that's all I have.
First reading of this policy is also on the agenda.
District Reports, Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Amaya, members of the Board, include, along with our monthly financial reports, we include the Budget and Tax Calendar, the initial proposed budget summary for fiscal year 2019, and the election calendar for November 6th, uniform election date. And I'm going to ask Mr. Young to share highlights of each of those reports at this time.
President Amaya, Dr. Salazar, members of the Board. Oh, just wanted to add a couple of items on these, on this, just for clarification. The Budget and Tax Calendar, we're back on schedule. I noticed the last couple of months, we had been slightly behind and we did our big marathon workshop here a couple of weeks ago, got us all cut up. So from this point forward, we'll be refining the budget. And the, there's actually a copy in here under Initial Proposed Budget Summary for next year. And it's essentially what we went over in the workshop due to the time constraints and some vacation time and stuff like that. We haven't made any changes to it since then. But we are working on the next revision right now, which is almost ready. So we'll be at your disposal. We need to have another workshop or talk about changes to it. We'll be happy to do so at that time. The things that we discussed in that workshop are all included in this, as we did. There's the teacher raise that applies to the professional hiring schedule, as well as a raise from the minimum, a 3% from the minimum for any type of administrative position, 5% for any of the paraprofessional and manual trades there. So just as a refresher for what we discussed in that. And I wanted to bring that up because all of those items that we discussed in the workshop are on the agenda this evening for approval. And just give everybody an opportunity, if there were any questions about those items or any discussion, we could talk about it.
Not sure why you didn't get any applause, but if you're okay with it.
Maybe next, maybe next time.
Whatever, whatever the reason, I don't, I'm not sure the protocol.
Raise, a raise usually initiates applause.
We could, we could do a resolution, I think.
Maybe that's it.
I don't know. All right. Anything else under the District Report, sir, that you need to cover?
Probably, it seems kind of early to be bringing you the election calendar already. But we're still kind of used to the old May date and this is the November election. So we actually are right on schedule with the first, bringing you the first thing. As you know, it's, this is all the domain of the Board, but we take care of a lot of the little details behind the scenes. So I just needed to put that out there so you all would know that we're going to go ahead and post, there is a deadline for posting of June 21st, to post the notice for the dates to apply for a position on the Board. So the first day to turn in an application for a place on the ballot is July 21st. We have to publish that a month ahead of time. So I will be posting that for you unless I receive other directions from the superintendent of those. The final day for posting, for applying for a position on the ballot is August 22nd, which falls after our meeting. So if we need, but if we need to, for whatever reason, cancel it, we can wait till after the meeting, call a special call and then cancel there. So there are some different provisions in the law now that it used to be that the last day to file was also that day, usually that second meeting that we have in August. Now, the write-in, and it used to be that the write-in deadline was also that day. They've extended the write-in deadline, so it's out actually till August 24th. So by stretching that out a little bit, it kind of interferes with our schedule, but it's nothing we can't, we can't overcome.
Thank you, sir. Anything else on District Reports, questions by members of the Board? Go ahead, ma'am.
I just want to go ahead and just add a comment to that because the 21st is on a Saturday. It'll actually be officially the 23rd, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. By law, we have to call it the 21st, but since we're also by law not required to be open on days when we're usually closed. So the actual first day for us is the 23rd of July.
Any other questions, clarifications? Any other questions, clarification? We're good, move on with the agenda. The next item is public audience. We don't, at this time, no one signed up for a, a public audience, so we go on to consent agenda. Item number nine, uh, tonight, we have about twenty-five items on consent agenda with some other, um, qualifiers under there, but we're, uh, as usual, I will entertain a motion to accept consent agenda as posted or if any of the board members would like to, uh, pull one of the items or more of the items for discussion, we can do that at this time. Do I have a motion? Mr. Ferias?
I, I move that we, that we accept the consent agenda as posted.
Is there a second? Mr. Garcia? A motion and a second to, uh, approve consent agenda as posted, all twenty-five items. At this time, uh, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Is unanimous, five to zero. Moving to action items, item number one, discuss and take action to award agreement slash contracts for C S P number seventeen dash eighteen dash thirty-six, student insurance to National Guardian Insurance Texas Insurance Service Center. Albert Salinas Agent, is, do we have a motion? Mr. Castillo? Is there a second? Ms. Peterson? Discussion? We have a motion and a second and no discussion on, uh, to take action to award the agreement or contract for C S P number seventeen dash eighteen dash thirty-six, student insurance to National Guardian Insurance Texas Insurance Service Center, Albert Salinas Agent. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. And unanimous? Action item number two, discuss and take action to award agreement slash contracts for C S P seventeen dash eighteen dash thirty-seven, asphalt and driveway maintenance and repairs to Texas Seal Coat and Striping. Do I have a motion? Go ahead, Mr. Garcia?
I move to award, um, contracts, C P S seventeen eighteen thirty-seven, asphalt and driveway maintenance and repairs to Texas Seal Coat and Striping.
Is there a second? Mr. Ferias? Discussion? There's no discussion. We have a motion and a second for item number two, to award contract, agreement, contract to C, C S P number seventeen eighteen dash thirty-seven, asphalt and driveway maintenance and repairs to Texas Seal Coat and Striping. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Abstaining? Item number, action item number three, discuss and take action to award agreement contracts for C S P number seventeen dash eighteen thirty-eight, twenty-eighteen, pavement rehabilitation projects to Peterson Construction Company, Inc. Is there a motion? Mr. Garcia?
I move to award agree, contracts to C S P seventeen eighteen thirty-eight to twenty-eighteen pavement rehabilitation projects to Peterson Construction Company, Incorporated.
Is there a second? Mr. Ferias? Discussion? We have no discussion on item number three, to award contract, agreement contracts for C S P number seventeen dash eighteen dash thirty-eight, twenty-eighteen, pavement rehabilitation projects to Peterson Construction Company, Inc. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Abstentions? Item number four. Discuss and take action to approve superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year. On this item, we have, uh, teachers, diagnostician, principal for La Cescas Elementary. Okay, item, uh, under, under four B has been withdrawn. So we just have the, our, our, um, superintendent's personnel recommendations are for teachers, diagnosticians, and the principals of La Cescas Elementary. Is, uh, do I have a motion? Mr. Ferias?
Superintendent's personnel recommendations are the, those positions that we did discuss.
Is there a second?
I'll second after.
Discussion? There's no discussion. We have a motion and a second to approve superintendent's personnel recommendations for following positions for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year. In this case, we have teachers, diagnostician, and principals for La Cescas Elementary. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Is unanimous? Are any of our new Falcons in, maybe there were already Falcons in, in, in the audience? Please stand. Welcome to y'all. Congratulations, welcome aboard. We'll be taking a recess or we'll adjourn the meeting just a little bit so we can come out and meet y'all formally. We are two, sir. Announcements.
Mr. Maya, members of the board, um, we continue with summer school interventions and enrichment programs. We also want to let you know that on Monday, June twenty-fifth through Friday, June twenty-ninth, we have the STAR E O C, the Third Administration of the State Assessments. And Wednesday, July fourth, our, uh, we suspend normal, uh, op, normal operations. Uh, we are celebrating for July, for the celebration of July fourth. And Monday, July ninth, at six P M., we'll have a regular school board meeting right here in this room. Those are all the announcements we have at this time.
Anything from any of the board members? It is six thirty-seven, meeting adjourned.